Alright, good evening, everyone. Call this December meeting of the Hopewell Borough Council to order. Reggie, will you do the...
At what notice of this meeting has been provided by a notice mail to the Hopewell Valley News and the Trenton Times posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and filed with the Borough Park as required by law.
Be in the flag, salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Hook?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Ms. Steele?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Valenius?
Here.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Happy holidays to the December meeting. As I try to do at the beginning of each of these meetings, talk a little bit about the different opportunities for public comment. This meeting compared to other ones recently is a little unusual. We don't have any public hearings or second readings of ordinances. So the two public comment opportunities will be upfront after a short bit of quick business that we'll have. And then at the end of the meeting, after our liaison reports from council. First item that we have is our report with Director of Public Works and the Director of Water and Sewer in our packets. Anyone have any questions? Perhaps to direct to our administrator? That will be the time. Otherwise, I would be really honored to move to item five. This meeting marks the last council meeting for Councilwoman Samara McCullough. It has been an absolute honor to serve with you and just on behalf of council on our time, just want to thank you. We have a proclamation that we prepared in your honor and I guess I'd like to have us read that into the record. I mean, starting with you, Heidi, and we'll go down the road, paragraph by paragraph.
A proclamation in appreciation of Borough Councilwoman Samara McCullough. Whereas on December 31st, 2024, Samara McCullough will complete two full terms of service on the Hopewell Borough Council and...
Yeah.
Oh, we're just doing one?
Yeah.
I thought that was what I was supposed to do.
Yes, that's correct. Okay.
Sorry.
I'll put it, it's also...
We didn't turn hers.
Whereas Samara McCullough did not seek reelection to a third term and... Whereas Councilwoman Samara McCullough served as a liaison to the Hopewell Valley Green Team and Board of Health and was the driving force behind the Borough's Hopewell for All Committee and...
Whereas Councilwoman McCullough also accepted committee assignments to the Buildings Committee, Recreation Committee, Finance Committee, Hopewell for All Personnel Committee, and Hope and Space Committee and...
Whereas Councilwoman McCullough's expertise in human resources provided improved and valuable during the search for and hiring process of the new Borough Administrator and...
Whereas Councilwoman McCullough was instrumental in developing the Borough Council's code of conduct and social media policy and...
Whereas Councilwoman McCullough has volunteered her time for other local organizations such as Moms Demand Action, Friends of Hopewell Valley Open Space, and the Mercer County Democratic Committee and...
Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council or the Borough of Hopewell on this, the 5th day of December 2024, that we on behalf of the citizens of Borough of Hopewell hereby extend deep appreciation to Samara McCullough for her six years of service as a member of the Hopewell Borough Council.
And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be delivered and we will do it personally in a minute, in a very fancy beautiful folder, to Councilwoman Samara McCullough, and that a copy of this resolution be spread in full in the official minutes of the Borough of Hopewell. So with that, Samara, thank you. I don't know if you'd like to have a minute, you're welcome to.
And I did have to write down notes because I think I referenced them here. I do struggle a little bit with public speaking, so I'm going to try to keep this brief. So thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to take a few minutes to reflect on this journey, one that has been deeply rooted in my love for this borough and the Hopewell Valley community as a whole. Firstly, I want to say that while it is an incredible privilege to serve, I firmly believe that service should not be reserved for the privileged. I really want to thank Mayor Kennedy, Council President Weaver, Doug, Reggie, and Lisa for your flexibility in working with my schedule for various meetings and calls. It meant a ton and enabled me to serve while balancing being a working mother who's in the physical office hosting. This inclusivity is essential to strive to better reflect the full diversity of our community in our leadership. So truly thank you so much for your flexibility and working in that way. I've spent the better part of my 44 years in Hopewell Valley. My parents lived in the township on Marshall's Corner since before I was born. My connection to the borough deepened when I was a child. We moved here in 1985 after my parents separated. My mom rented a house here on the street that I chose and to raise my children ran against Fiona on. And it was at that time that I discovered a community that really became my home. One memory that stayed with me all these years, this is a little anecdotal, but it means something to me if I'm just going to take the opportunity to say it, was when I was in 4th grade and I was trudging to school with my cello and it was, they didn't have, now they have the straps where you just kind of put it on your back. Back then it didn't really look like that and it was uncomfortable. It was pouring rain, it was a downpour. My music teacher happened to be driving to the school at that time and she stopped to give me a ride and she helped me load my cello into her car. And it was a really simple act of kindness, but it meant so much to me and that sort of personal touch that I feel defines this borough for me. I know moments like that are harder to imagine happening today, but for me, that's a core memory of the borough and why I love it. This place has always had my heart since I've known it. It's why I chose to serve. I wanted to give back to the community that gave so much to me when I was growing up. Serving on this council has been both an honor and a challenge these last six years, spanning from learning the ropes to navigating COVID and also to navigating my own crippling anxiety around public speaking, which is why I did write my thoughts down in the... This past year in particular has been incredibly difficult. We faced important and at times contentious issues. And I've struggled, but in the best possible way, to weigh every perspective, to listen not just to the loudest voices, but to all of the voices and to work to find the best path forward for the borough with my colleagues from here. It's been hard, however, for me to witness what I perceive as a breakdown in civility at times, to hear and read personal attacks on individuals and untruths that can feel discouraging. I know the same can be said for many of you who care deeply about this town and this borough and all of you. My hope is that we move forward, is that we move forward as a borough next year. We remember that we are all people who are doing our very best in the town that we all love. We all deserve respect and we all deserve accurate information and I truly believe this community has the ability to grow stronger together and that's pretty special. So after today, I'll take my place on the other side of the dais. I will continue to carry with me a deep respect for the work that goes into serving this town, the labor of love. And I'm beyond grateful to have had the chance to participate with all of the ups and downs that have come along with it. I'd be remiss if I didn't quickly acknowledge my husband, Patrick, who's patient and supportive, no no boundaries. Thank you for being a shoulder and an ear these last six years. I'm incredibly thankful for you. I'm also incredibly grateful to my children for their love and support, even when it took time away, took me away from them that should have been time spent with them from their perspective, I'm sure. So thank you for trusting me to do my very best. I look forward to seeing the new council in 2025 welcoming Anthony Fuller. I know the tremendous amount of work that lies ahead of you and I appreciate your continued service to our town. I appreciate you and I'm grateful to have served with you, especially with my seat in your family.
Thank you all. You all stood very much.
Samara, well said and on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. We know you're not going far or anywhere and we appreciate your dedication to your service as well. Our next item is, we have, as we explore our future of our water system, we have committed to have updates at every meeting. So this month, the general updates are that we're expecting in coming weeks, in fact, on December 17th, bids in for potential entities that would like to be deemed qualified as potential future suitors or bidders for the water system from us. So the way that the process, we're following that, assuming we get one or more interested parties that are qualified, the borough would go through a finalize the process to qualify them, make sure that they actually are appropriate to even consider. And then we would finalize our, what's called RFP, Request for Proposals, which would then outline what we're looking for, for what type of bid or deal essentially from these suitors we're looking for. And then get that on the street and get responses. It's really only then, after we've taken those steps, that we would have something in hand from anyone interested to know and have something to compare with either our current or projected situation. We're hopeful from a timeline perspective that we'll, again, we'll get that in December, perhaps take the steps to qualify any of those parties at our January meeting. And then hopefully soon thereafter have our RFP out so that we can spend some time this spring gathering information from those suitors and perhaps having offers or bids to consider. The other piece, and I'll ask my colleagues on the Water Committee and our administrator to chime in when I inevitably forget parts of this, but a lot of work this month has gone towards not the sale of the system, but on our regular operations of our water system that would continue notwithstanding the sale, things like the solicitation and we'll have later in this evening in our consent agenda, bringing on outside administrative resources to help us with running the system. And we're hopeful to have some engineering firms to talk to in the coming weeks for what we call an action plan for our reservoir to make sure that we're adequately prepared for anything in that regard. I'll also quickly comment and then hand it over to, again, my colleagues to finish up. But this evening, we are falling through with something that we talked about not just last month, but when we had very difficult conversations last spring about our water rates. And this evening, we will be introducing a resolution to change our rates, particularly for the larger users, in many cases lowering them by as much as 18 to 20%. This is not an indication that we believe that there are opportunities for future lowering or to lower the budget amount that we have to spend on our system. But this is a difficult rebalancing of the costs between residential and large commercial users. We don't have different rates for commercial versus residential customers, but we do tier our rates. So the more water you use, the more expensive it gets. And by this action, our intention is to continue to do our best to have a fair balance between our types of users and to provide relief for our restaurants and heavier water using businesses, which we heard, we've heard loud and clear through this process, that our community wants to support and we're here to make good on that tonight. David, Kristin, anything you want to add to that?
Just, you know, talking about the rates, we have several different rate levels. And the highest ones are the ones that we changed the rates for and that's basically for years of more than 30,000 gallons per quarter, which, for example, a lot of restaurants are using 100,000 or more. So, and those were also the users that had the largest increase when we changed our rates back in March. So, which were on the order of about 54% overall for the people that were those highest categories. So we had an opportunity to, looking at our budget for 2025 and all the various factors, pros and cons, we were able to basically stay revenue neutral or at least made our revenue targets and still make those adjustments. And we decided that the best thing was to prioritize those adjustments to the higher rate users because the businesses are the ones that, you know, are, have very often not much choice about that volume and they can economize only so much. And it's having the largest financial impact on them. So that's where we are. And it's modest, but it's the best that we can do under the circumstances and it's what we've talked about all year. And, but we had to wait till now to get a clear fix on what our budget picture was like for next year before we could do it.
Now, we could just add to that, that, you know, in years past, we've waited till the springtime to look at our rates and our commitment is to do it as often as is fair and possible to make sure that we're being as fair as we can to all of our rate payers. With that, move to our first of two public comment sections. The first one, we try to limit folks to five minutes first for people in person and then folks on Zoom. You can push your raise hand button, we'll bring you on screen here. We can't take any immediate action on any common issue, but we'll do our best to listen and if we can respond to comments or questions that you have.
Lynn, thank you for lowering the water rates. That means a huge, that means a lot to us, to all of us who pay the higher rates. So really appreciate that you, you know, thought about it, took it into consideration with the revenue and lowered the rates and that can be a little bit easier for the next quarter. Thank you. Then I have two other things that are separate. One is, you know that lot by Al's that the town owns? Could we, could the town sell it if we needed revenue? I'm just curious, like, I don't even know, I just heard that the town owns the lot, so I thought I'll just bring that up because I don't know how that works. You know, and then the other question is about the sanctuary city. So I was just hoping you guys could comment on what that means for us, how it works and what we might tell our friends in town who are concerned about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll start and try a little bit to get to, if I remember all of your questions, I think it's just two. One, maybe refer a little bit to Lisa on the legal question. I believe we do own that lot as a result of some type of tax procedure came back to us. It is a little tricky for what might be called non-conforming lots. If it's smaller than could be usable, it may be a challenge to sell it. We could look into that. My recollection is that it may be a pre-existing non-conforming lot that may not be of much use to anyone other than perhaps the adjacent owner, which is kind of separated by, I think, a lot of water.
Well, right, that's the other thing is that has stream going through it. So I think the conclusion was, at least previously, was that it's probably not usable as standalone as a residential lot that you can sell. We're having some very, very preliminary discussions. I mean, this is just scheming about things that could be done with that lot. One of them is potentially, because there's a fair amount of our stormwater that comes through town, comes through that stream. And so it's been suggested that possibly there's an opportunity there to create a detention structure or some sort of structure that might help with flooding downstream. It's, again, this is just an idea and, but it's interesting that historically there actually was a pond there. So if you look at the old sandborne maps, the Hopewell Creamery was located on the concrete foundations that are in the rear of the property, the other railroad. And there was a pond, it actually extended across, was the upstream over to where Borough of Illusion is as well. So it would be sort of like, I want it, we restore it to a pond. But at any rate, in our long sort of menu of things to look at and think about, about stormwater resiliency, it's something that's come up. That's about as far as it's gotten so far.
But, and I guess just to say from a revenue process, I'd say it could be used independently and privately and maybe was worth something. That may not be the case. The, we have to put out to bid essentially and let a competitive process for it. There's a couple of, if that fails for a few times, then there's an option to approach the direct neighbors. But it doesn't, it really is a function of whether it can be used and whether we want it to be used, frankly, to put some thought into whether it's appropriate place, you know, that close to a water feature to have something built. But it's a, you know, very, it's a good idea, you know, and a property worth looking at.
I was just curious. Thank you.
I'll also, I'll start a bit. I've talked with many concerned residents about our current status, our existing commitment that we, actually this predates my involvement even as elected official here as a sanctuary city. I'll say personally, I'm proud that we've taken that stance and continue to have that as a policy of the borough. But for those in our community looking for comfort, I'll say that our ability is limited because we really only have direct control over our very limited points of contact, staff and services. And we have very few employees and we can set a policy for them and we have. I'll say I've been in discussions and reached out to our neighboring partner governments, whether it's the entities that we share a police department and health department with and the county. And I'm hoping to have information to report back that would be of additional comfort and resource for the community. I've got a couple of upcoming meetings to that end. If anyone, Lynn, I know you, several people have brought it up, please continue. If there's other resources that you think would be helpful to us as a governing body to know about, to help with our policy or information that would be helpful for us to get out to our community so that people know about the resources that are available, please continue to send that our way and I'll say my way. I'm happy to be the point of contact for that. With that, I'm happy to, if anyone else has comments?
The last time I looked on the Hopewell Township Police Department's website, they actually did have a page that essentially said they will not enforce immigration law. So I haven't checked it recently. I mean, I assume it's still there. So that is their, has been their stance and I don't see any harm in the borough reaching out to them and saying we would like to keep it that way.
Yeah, I can, I guess I'm the only one here that was there when that passed. Where am I going to move out of constitutional law? That's right, you were. That's right, sorry. And so at the time, what was acknowledged was that it really was, it was an acknowledgement of existing policies, both at the state and county level. In other words, our understanding from the state police and also from the Hopewell Township Police, so I believe from the county prosecutor's office, was that basically they weren't in the business of essentially turning people in for nonviolent crimes, right? The one thing I know with traffic that was an issue was DWI. That was one thing I think that was reportable, but my understanding. So in other words, our understanding, I think, and tell me if it's differently, was that, I mean, it was an acknowledgement on the part of the borough of our own policy, but in fact, it didn't actually change the policies that were already in place, which essentially didn't, you know, take an active part in law enforcement relative to immigration. I guess that's the best way to frame it. One of the things that I was thinking about this the other day, that I don't think we ever did, was to do any outreach in terms of communicating that resolution, that decision, that policy, particularly bilaterally, because I don't know that there was any outreach other than just it being in the papers. And to me, a very important element was of it was the notion that you want to have people who feel safe calling law enforcement or other officials when there's an emergency, when something happens. Somebody's hurt or somebody breaks into their house, whatever, without fear of some sort of reprisal. And from what I understand, that's a daily part of a lot of people's lives. So for this to actually have an effect in terms of that aspect of it, people have to know about and they have to have some, you know, faith in the fact that that'll be true. And it's interesting, I mean, I'll just very quickly, the first time that I ever met Krista Weaver and her husband was when you helped me to rescue this dog. Remember that? It was a Saturday before you even bought your house.
A husky on the loose.
That's right. Husky on the loose, Saturday afternoon at Hopewell, we were trying to find out whose dog it was. And, and people went on Facebook and they said, oh, it belongs to these folks of this particular house in town, which has the windows drawn, all the shades drawn all the time and I think has a lot of undocumented people in it. It turns out it was true and the animal control officer was a great guy, went there with the dog and knocked on the door. Of course, nobody would answer and then he went to, but he's also a volunteer firefighter and he said, you want to know what's going on? Go to the firehouse, they'll tell you everything. And they said, oh yeah, we know those folks, we'll call them and tell them you're okay. So he was able to go back with the dog, you know, in a uniform, he's an animal control officer and talked to them, returned the dog, encouraged him to get the dog shipped and so on and so forth, then it was all resolved well. But it was an interesting window into that very thing, which is people's fear of interacting with anybody official. So I'll just suggest that if we want this to have a practical effect, a benefit for people, that might be something to think about.
It's a great violation of laws.
Thank you.
I suspect it's important, I would imagine.
Thank you, Lynn.
I would be happy to distribute it, you know, if you ever do it in a violent way.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else here in person or online want to push your raise hand button? Seeing none, a motion to close the first public comment session? Next item is the minutes from our last meeting. Happy to take a motion to approve those from those who were here.
Also.
Any, any comments or questions before you vote? Seeing none, I'll... We can do this by, all in favor? All opposed? And with a bit of exception? Thank you. Next, our consent agenda, a few comments just from me and I'm happy to take any requests to pull any other items out. Item Resolution 112 follows a, the planning board meeting last night where our request as council, the report from our planner, to create an area in need of rehabilitation was essentially reviewed and sent back to us positively. I'm excited for the tools that might be available in the future for the town with our downtown area in particular. There's very little with the process in this destination that would happen automatically, with the one exception of there are a few grant, perhaps grant opportunities or financial programs from the state that are only available if your property is in a rehabilitation or redevelopment area. And now properties would qualify for those. The second, and I, I almost hesitate to say this, but it does make properties in the borough eligible to receive a liquor license potentially transferred from an out of, from an adjacent municipality. The liquor license reform from last year created that opportunity for unused licenses in an adjacent town to be purchased and relocated to an adjacent town, but only into a property that is in a redevelopment or rehabilitation area. We only have three properties in a redevelopment area. Now it's available for the whole town. If someone were to find, buy and transfer one, we will be happy to help you with that. Second, we'll look next year at a tax incentive program. Currently, if you were to buy a building anywhere really downtown, invest in it. Honestly, the first thing you get when you're done is a new tax bill. We would be able to create a program to not, you know, to try to incentivize that type of activity rather than give you an added assessment. It is limited to five years for that program, but we'll explore that and try to create an incentive program there. It also creates some more flexible zoning tools. Our planning board has looked for years at the downtown area in particular, the BR zone and what needs to be changed. It's a, it's a heavy lift to figure out what works everywhere on, in that zone or across town. This may allow in the future some flexibility for that. So I'm very excited to see it on the agenda finally, after a lot of work on that one. I'll add, because you're not going to take credit for it, this was your initiative, mayor's initiative, something that you became aware of and thought was a good fit for us and advocated for it and I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
It'll be a good idea when something positive happens. Right now it's a bunch of, okay, very, very, it's another set of tools for us to use and that's what's, you know.
Kind of a curiosity question for myself and probably for others about how long, because it says, you know, I mean, we're going to be, they're going to be creating a rehabilitation plan. What's an approximate timeframe? And I'm just, it's just a curiosity thing so people understand what this...
So it happens as fast as the resources we put into it. And so of the two new tools that we could invoke, I personally think the tax abatement incentive program is an easy... New tools that we could invoke, uh, I personally think the tax abatement incentive program is an easier one to put together. Uh, there's a lot of models for other towns that have done it, for example, you could have a residential program where you put your addition in, you're done, you fill out a form and you get a, you know, you don't get your tax bill. It could be as simple as that, it's a blanket program, that it could be targeted perhaps to businesses, but there's a lot of models for that. The zoning tools part of it could be as simple as waiting for someone to approach us with a property and and creating a plan. When someone is is ready to do something, or it could be, uh, a master plan like. Review of what our zoning could be with the, just a different way to do it, so I I honestly, I think our track record with rezoning and and. Working on, thinking about it for years is is not giving us a lot of dividends, to be honest with you, you know, uh, so I I think, uh, more likely it may be, uh. A tool for a, a, an overlay, if there's things we want to incentivize in part of towns, it's a, a tool that we could do that. In order to do that, similar to the way redevelopment plans go, it would be, uh, worked on. First, we have to create a subcommittee, uh, the planning board would assist with it, it is done by ordinance, so it does require, uh. Several meetings and a trip to the planning board in between if we were to invoke the zoning type of tools for it. And that, that may take a while, now, if something came up, if, uh, there was a exciting project or idea, you know, we can put more resources to it. Um, or again, you know, if someone had a, uh, the thing that excites me and and that keeps, well, of the many things keep me up at night, I guess, is. If someone were to come to the town with a great idea for a piece of property, um. The current process is, unless it's something that works with our current zoning, in order to get before our planning board, you have to design the project. You have to fully engineer it and file an application, and there's been some examples of that happening and not being successful here in town, frankly. Um, and it's a big investment to even have the chance to see if our planning board is interested in doing it, um. This would allow, uh, a more stepped kind of conversation base where there could be an initial toe in the water where council was okay with a certain. Type of use, for example, a reuse or, uh, rather than a full rezoning of a property, we could do that and it might give an investor the confidence that. While they have figured out the details of it, that it might be palatable and they might invest more in the process and and get to a finished product. I think that's more likely outcome, um, but we could use it as a tool to rezone, you know, anything that we we want.
And so, and how you first mentioned that there, this does open up a few grant opportunities, like maybe when we do the announcement of this, can we put something on a, you know, website? Like here are the grant opportunities that, that, that are available, like, you know.
Sure, I I, and and particularly, if nothing else, um, uh, so just people know that it's there. If you were to say, file an application with the Economic Development Authority or Small Business Association, some of their programs, there's a checkbox for this, you might not even know that now you can check.
Right, just so people, you know, understand.
That's a great idea. We did talk about water rates, um, we mentioned, uh. Earlier in our discussion about the water that, uh, you know, some of the steps we're taking towards bringing in more administrative resources for our water system, uh, resolutions, uh. We've got a resolution, uh, there for that, um, we are advancing a project for, um, modifications and upgrades to our sorely needed upgrades. Frankly, to our Public Works Building, um, this doesn't. Necessarily put them into motion, but are necessary to take a few steps towards it in order to make sure we keep some grant funding that has been, uh, available. Close, close that up with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, uh, and and lastly, uh, on on a personal note, I I want to, uh, this week marked, uh, a year, uh, with our administrator, um. Uh, uh, I, I don't think I'm speaking just for myself, I know I'm not, um, that Doug has done a phenomenal job here in town. Um, and has, uh, literally worked, uh, more than we ever anticipated, um, uh. Or contraction, or contractually agreed to, uh, uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that we have a, um. A, uh, resolution that recognizes the, the effort both, um, substantively. And and literally in terms of hours, uh, that he's put in, uh, thus far, so Doug, I really appreciate and thank you, uh, for that.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Happy Doug-aversary.
Yeah.
And, uh, again, that, I mean, comments or requests to pull anything out for discussion?
Just one comment, just on the, the professional service contract for assistance to the water department, this is. Um, it seems like a small thing, but it is actually huge with two O's, um, it is because we have one person who is basically. Doing all, it has all the operational responsibilities, but with that also a huge part of the administrative responsibility, not the billing, but. Compliance, sampling, all the other stuff that happens, and it's way too much for one person, so this is an opportunity to bring in someone who we've met. Uh, who I met with, uh, over a year ago, I think, Ralph Cratchit, who's a public utility expert, just started, worked from the ground up. Those water systems inside and out, um, works really well with Dave Meislich. And he's there to actually provide, um. Assistance on all sorts of levels and have somebody else kind of looking at the dashboard so that, you know, we can be a little more proactive about things. Make it easier to manage things, see what's coming on the horizon in terms of new administrative things that we have to do and procedural things that we have to do. So it's a big deal and it's a modest cost, and I think it's hopefully going to make Dave's life a lot easier and it's going to, he's going to improve the overall, um. Management of the system, so it's, I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. Reggie, uh, with apologies, I'll take a motion, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the current agenda, so one twelve to one nineteen, I know we were, we had a walk on tomorrow. One twenty, okay, thank you. One twenty one, thank you, thank you, thank you. So I will take a, a, a motion of one, one twelve to one twenty one if someone would like to, so, ooh, second? Alright.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Valenius?
Yes.
Now, um, for our council liaison reports, uh, so I'll give you the option, would you like to go first or what?
I don't, I don't, I'll go first.
Excuse me, claims for payment?
Uh.
Oh, yes.
Uh, we'd, we'd like to save the towns some money this month and not pay any of our payments. Now, with apologies, uh, uh, take a, a motion, uh, for, uh, claims for payment.
I'll do it. I'll second.
Alright, Samara and and Deb seconding, that's a beautiful.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Valenius?
Yes.
Well, I'll do my best to not skip anything else, particularly important things, but, uh, uh, thanks for, Deb going next?
Um, yeah, so, uh, the library board met, um, earlier this week and, um. Set up their first meeting for next year, January seventh, I think it is, to, um, you know, establish dates for the rest of the year and and meeting places and. Things like that, and everything else is kind of on hold till next year, we've got the recreation committee, which will meet early next year, and then the building committee, we haven't met recently, but probably will soon.
David going next? Uh, so here I talked about water rates, um, a couple of things we, everybody's gotten their, um, circulating, uh, PPOS public notification letter, uh. Reporter of twenty twenty four, um, happy to say the numbers are basically the same, I think we're still within the standards. Um, but you also got, of course, another letter in there and I'll, I'll talk about the briefing, it's not for everybody, but we, we had a. A non-compliance issue with the D E P that has to do with zinc orthophosphate, which is an additive that we put in our water, is an anti-corrosive agent, it's, um. Kind of on top, or we've never had a problem really with lead or copper contamination in our system because we have a neutral pH and hard water, as everybody knows, which tend to. Uh, induce, um, exposure to those metals, but zinc orthophosphates are anti-corrosive, that it essentially reacts with metals and it forms a coating on the pipes and on your fixtures, everything. Um, to further limit lead and copper exposure, so we've been doing that since twenty sixteen, um, injecting that into the water, um. There's a sort of an optimum concentration you're supposed to maintain and during the first half of the year, and then we fell below that concentration. Based on laboratory results, so the D E P, uh, basically cited us for it and we figured out the nature of the problem, um, adjusted the injector. So it's putting in the right amount of zinc orthophosphate again, uh, and we have to continue monitoring, um, and, uh, as part of that, actually, the. At the federal level, they just updated the, what's called the lead and copper rule in October, and that means we have to do additional sampling for lead and copper anyway. Which we have to do some this year and the other set of samples next year, and, uh, but it's, it's not a contamination issue, it's just a preventative measure and so, um. It's largely a kind of an administrative thing, but, okay, that's, I think, all we've got.
Thank you. Anyone else next, sure?
Um, the E D C, the, um, borough planters have been refilled with the holiday trees, um, thank you to the Sowerland Conservancy, um, um. For replanting all thirty planters, um, and Department of Public Works for actually moving them on to, you know, doing the physical lifting. Um, several of the trees have been decorated by different community members and organizations and anybody who would like to sign up to to decorate a tree. Can do so on the downtown Hopewell website, just downtownhopewell.com. Um, and you can also vote for trees, um, there is information on the website and ballots can be cast at both woolen oak. And dandelion, which is, um, for the trees. Um, the green team, um, the Hopewell Valley Community Wildlife Habitat Program, which is something that we. Joined in officially last month, will be hosting a pollinator garden workshop at the train station on Saturday, January twenty fifth from ten to one. Once we receive, um, the flyer, we will share that out via the borough email and social media, um. And we will be hosting our second zero waste pop lock at the train station, actually our third, our third zero waste pop lock. Um, on Saturday, January twenty sixth from five to seven, um, that is open to everyone, um, and that also will be announced in the borough email and on social media. And the Hopewell Public Library is going to help us publicize it as well. Um, and just the reminder that metal recycling will be coming up on Saturday, February eighth, and that does include holiday lights. So if you go to plug in your holiday lights this year and they don't work, you can save them till February and we can recycle them at the Township Public Works Building, so.
So that's, and all sorts of different metals are used.
All sorts of metals, yeah, basically, as long as it's a primarily metal thing and it's not, you know, doesn't have like propane in it or something hazardous or explosive. And it is, oh, yeah, and.
Scrap aluminum, whatever.
Scrap aluminum, basically, and the rule is if you can drive it to them, so if you, if you can fit your refrigerator in your truck and you can bring it to them, you can bring it to them.
Okay.
Um, it is Saturday, February eighth, which is also known as Super Bowl Saturday, so the day before the Super Bowl. Um, and it is from twelve to three and that will be shared, um, you know, but email and all of that, and that is organized by the Hopewell Valley Green Team.
So I include, um, lead batteries? You might not just make that.
I don't think it, no, probably not, no, this is just, because this is right, yes, that's hazardous waste, that's hazardous waste and e-waste.
Yeah, yeah, no, just making sure, because it's always good to clarify that.
Yeah, but there's, and so, I mean, really, that, that, that like little piece of metal junk that's been sitting at the back of your garage, is this, this is the event for it, yes.
That's it, thank you, there.
The Hopewell Fire Department responded to forty one calls and many of them were brush fires, and this is what I learned, that. You know, you think they just pull up in their fire truck, but when it's a brush fire, they take that big tanker truck up. Sometimes front guys have to chop trees down so they have, they can drive the truck, I mean, the stuff they do is crazy, yeah, it's crazy. So, um, including like the, the train overpass by the golf course, it was so dry that, um, the train wheels sparked a spark. That landed in the field and sent half the golf course, yeah, exciting, but they put it out, so you can still go. Uh, and T responded to forty eight calls, their annual tree lighting is this Saturday at six P M. Followed by Santa being inside to receive wish lists, and I think they have cocoa, I think. Um, their gift drop off is happening, uh, again this year, so the, the gift delivery, if your friends ask you, the delivery drop off is the. Eighth, tenth, eighth, ninth and tenth from six to nine at the fires. So you bring a small inexpensive wrapped gift, label it with your kid's name, age and address, a minimum donation of twenty five, but I think you have a bunch of, a little bit more. And then deliveries will be fifteen, sixteen, seventeen from six to nine. And they, I think, they let you know about what day your delivery will be.
It's a form you have to fill out?
There is.
Can you find it online?
No. You can go drop your gift off.
So it'll be there with us?
Yes, 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 it's, it's short, um, and I, I, I'm curious what age is too old.
No age.
No age, that's what I think.
That's not really an age limit on it.
Okay, alright, good. Um, senior advisory board, they're having their New Year's Eve party on December thirty first from one to three P M, which is like starting to be my. First timeline of our New Year's Eve party. Um, but all, they, you know, they have tons of events this holiday, so, uh, if you're a senior, you can go register on their senior services page. And, um, shade tree committee, I met a few people at the league convention and there's a state grant, Doug, they want to talk to you about, maybe getting. That would help pay for the, the tree count for our forestry plan, but I just need to get some more information about it. And this is not my committee report, but the, um, there's a big convention every year, the New Jersey League of Municipalities has this huge convention in. Atlantic City and all the towns and municipalities send representatives there and it's three days of presentations and our council president, Krista Weaver. Presented at a, a Building Better Streets presentation and about the work that she's done to make our town safer. And I have been to a lot of these presentations, this one first of all was packed and people were rapidly paying attention to her instead of looking at their phones and taking picture of her slides.
Got you.
She did a great job, she did really a great job and and very well represented the borough, so congratulations on that.
Um, so, um, Dollar Valley Regional Planning Commission had a meeting in November to discuss the distribution of State Streets for All funding and also how to further the cause of Vision Zero in the area. And P D S A will be meeting next Tuesday at seven P M in the upstairs conference room.
And I forgot one thing, so this weekend, um, is jam packed with stuff happening around town and I posted it today and I forgot to say it. So the library, the museum and the old school Baptist meeting house are doing a joint open house on Saturday, ranging from like one to three, there'll be. Food and cider and all kinds of fun stuff going on, there's, uh, I think a tuba or trombone group playing at the library, so that should be really interesting and fun. Uh, Morpath is having an open house that day, Highland Design Farm up the hill is having an open house and holiday sale both Saturday and Sunday. The Ooh La La French Craft Art and Art Care is at the train station Saturday and Sunday, the tree lighting, as Sherry mentioned, is Saturday night, I think at six.
Yep.
Um, Chubbies is having a pop up, uh, thing, Lynn, um, from ten to two on Sunday, right? And, um, I forgot to put it here, I think the Second Calvary Baptist Church is also having.
They're having a bazaar or something.
A bazaar or something, and I think it's on Saturday, so, had a great time going around town, we did a lot of good stuff happening and you can do your shop local. And, uh, it should be a great weekend for the borough, that's it.
Uh, compliments from me, uh, Sherry, thank you for representing us at the Veterans Day Ceremony, uh, last month, uh, much appreciated, a very, always a very moving, um. Event and appreciate the Township and our partners for putting that on at Woolsey Park, um. Uh, we had a really great showing this month, uh, for the Ruby Bridges Day Walk to School, uh, Hopewell Elementary families, uh, uh. Embarked from across town, uh, made their way to the train station and processed together, uh, with, with help from our police department, fire department and public works. It was another really, uh, moving, uh, showing, uh, from our community, um. Our administrator and I have been meeting with our school district and we'll meet with them again, uh, next month, just about future planning and our coordination, um, of, you know, policy wise. Um, I continue to have, uh, uh, successful, and I won't be specific, but, uh, calls, uh, direct calls with property owners, uh, that, uh. May be in need of a nudge towards, um. Either compliance or sprucing up their properties or or worse, so, uh, we'll continue to do that, uh, nothing specific to report or say about any of them other than. Um, if, if there are properties that are of issue, please, um, make comment to the borough through our administrator or our zoning officer or health officer. If there are problems with properties, it's very important that we have a, a record and file of, of the comments, um, because then it helps us take action later on, um. Talk about their need to rehab, uh, in, normally, uh, we do, uh, our, Doug and I do, uh. A Saturday session for, uh, just drop in discussions, uh, keep an eye on the website, uh, we may move it to Sunday, uh, the fifteenth, this, this month. And move to the train station, uh, the website will be updated if that, uh, happens to kind of take the show on the road a little bit. I was going to thank, uh, Heidi, uh, earlier this week, um, we had a really moving ceremony for. Also want to thank Heidi earlier this week. We had a really moving ceremony for the, what's now Unity. Formerly Women's Space Communities of Light, their CEO came behind us on Steph's Borough Hall and spoke. It was a very moving ceremony and appreciative that our town participates so widely in supporting them. Lastly, just want to, very thankful, you know, for all the hard work of all the volunteers, both on this side and your side of this dais here in town, for our staff and professionals here in the borough. We really do have an amazing community with energy and talent to match the heart that's consistently shown by our residents. I, I wish everyone a joyful holiday season. And while I will miss working with Councilwoman McCullough, I'm excited for her next steps and ours as community as we all continue to work together. So again, Samara, thank you. Congratulations. Doug, anything you want to add from your report?
Yeah, just a couple of few things. Diane and I, we were talking about it over the last couple of months, my two old ordinances. And we were able to count, count, cancel five hundred, over five hundred fourteen thousand dollars with her ordinances. Which basically is just dead money on the books, counts towards our debt. So we're able to free that up. The resolution that we passed tonight frees that money up and it gives us four hundred and six, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that we can use to repay debt in, in addition to lowering our debt ratio. And gives us another forty-two thousand that we can use for capital projects. And twenty-eight hundred goes into our capital surplus. So anyway, it's a win for the borough. It's five hundred fourteen thousand dollars.
We just received the V O T grant for two seventy-two five for Aggie, Eden Place and North Lanning. And it's a hundred percent. It'll, it'll fund all the constructions. That's a home run. So we'll do that. So we'll be doing that next year. We'll finalize the engineering, get that done. And we'll be doing Hard Avenue as well. Entire left. So that'll, that'll be a very active spring next year. We were able to find out that we can bond for the legal fees and the engineering fees associated with the whip up for the potential sale. And what that allows us to do is we don't have to put those costs into our water rates for this year. Okay. And then what we can do is should we sell the system, we can use the proceeds to pay off the debt. If not, we can use some of that money that we released here to pay it off. So and we would just take a ban. So it would just be one year petty interest only. And then, so we'll be in good shape there. And then Hard Avenue, the contract, as I mentioned, has been awarded with the scheduling of pre-con. And we have a meeting on January sixth to fire up the dark sky ordinance again. So we'll get that moving and hopefully introduce that maybe in February or something, get that on the books. So that's it.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, I'll need to open up the meeting for our second public comment question. If you're here in person, please come up to the front. If you are online, please push the raised hand button.
Hi, everyone. Susan Bar, resident. Samara, I just want to thank you for your service. Thank you very much. It was very moving. That's what you said. But I, just a couple of questions have come up from just being here. David, you talked about that now we are going to have another water person. Is that like a full-time?
No, no, it's actually, I did, sorry, I didn't, I didn't make that clear. It's, we're probably looking at what? Five, six hours a week, maybe a bit more, could be, I mean, depending sort of as needed. So this person's coming in basically to, so, but, but on a regular basis, but on a part-time basis. Basically, just to help support regulatory compliance, a lot of stuff that actually I'm doing. But I'm still doing that. But you know, keeping tabs on the D E P, what are the rule changes and what are the compliance issues? Deadlines, just looking at the dashboard and saying, okay, so in the next month, you know, we have lab results due for these things. We have sampling due for this, just, you know, all of that kind of stuff that's constantly in motion. To, to basically free up Dave to do, or at least take some of the load off his shoulders. But also that person's going to be kind of reporting back to us. I mean, we'll all be working together and and it's somebody that has a lot of experience doing this.
Yeah, you mentioned his name. What was it?
Ralph Karachia. And, and we met with him actually when we, when Steve Mountain was our interim administrator, he had worked with him. And we were talking about the need to have some additional support for the water department. So we got together and gave him the tour of the whole system, spent a couple of hours, talked through all these things and really impressed. Very knowledgeable and easy to work with.
And it's a contracted position.
Okay, yeah.
So it's basically on an hourly basis and, but we're, we're estimating.
Fifteen, twenty at the most.
Yeah.
At the most.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, but he's, he could be, he could have a huge effect for a relatively modest budget. And, and that's what we're really, what people were.
And the second question about walk, sort of water, that you had mentioned at one of the other meetings, that you and like Andrew Lloyd were going to like walk around the town and sort of start thinking about, talking about like stormwater.
Oh, yeah, well, we.
Has that all happened?
Well, it's, it's an ongoing process. Actually, I'm going to get together with Andrew probably Tuesday to do, there's a lot to see. So we spent the better part of the day, I think it was late September, early October. I think it was more recent than well. Well, well, he's in Tampa. For obvious reasons, he's in Tampa a lot too. But the, the engineering team was, was there earlier this month. Well, that was another topic, actually, but that was, that was on a specific issue. But, but the, the larger issue, what Andrew and I are working on is looking at the whole, all the drainage systems that affect us, which is of course a huge area. Looking at vulnerabilities, things that potentially we can improve, looking at opportunities potentially to, you know. And the, the idea is, and we, we keep finding things. This is what happens when you just literally put your boots on and start walking around poking around. Andrew began by doing something very important, which is that he, because he has sort of the resources at the county planning department. It's called a digital elevation model. It's basically a very detailed topographic model of the whole sort of watershed area that comes in. And you can look at this thing and figure out which way water is flowing. And what, what's really important is if you take the three streams basically that comes through town, you can see what the areas are that contribute to those three areas. So it gives you an idea of how much is actually coming into the whole system. But it also, and, and, and so among the things we're thinking about is, you know, things that maybe have to be reinforced. Maybe opportunities today, like things that are culverted, you know, where it's possible. But you, you know, you're dealing with a lot of decisions that were made over, over a century where people would decide to pipe water here and then they build around it and so on. So there's a lot of, so, but the, the ultimate goal is neither of us are engineers, neither of us are in a position to sort of design these things. It's to get a really sort of holistic understanding of these issues and then start teeing up priority projects to actually sit down with engineers. So that we can then think about, well, where are the places that we really want to put our effort? And then having gone through that, how do we actually start looking for funding to make those things happen? So it's, it's going to be a long-term process. But for example, though, in the shorter term, I mean, we found some areas where we need to be doing a better job of doing maintenance on certain open channels. It's getting overgrown or there's brush in there. And we're, you know, in fact, we're having a meeting next week to talk about one particular area in town. Because there are areas where the borough has easements, so we can go in and clean things. And we just, you know, we want to stay on that a little bit more regularly just to make sure. I mean, the borough always does these inspections before every major storm. They go, they look at every storm drain and every culvert and everything to make sure there isn't something clogging. But there may be some additional measures that we want to do. So that's kind of the low hanging fruit. The larger stuff is, for example, like Hard Avenue, right? Where that stream comes in and through the hard property and much more complicated.
I certainly also vote for the intersection of Broad and Mercer.
Right, well, that's.
Flooded there four times and.
So that's where a huge amount of the water, I mean, I, I have, it's what I call sort of the eastern and the western system. The eastern system is the culvert that goes through the railroad. The stream that then goes underneath Somerset, goes through Hopewell fifty-seven and then into a culvert and then out of Castoros. That's what I call the eastern system. I don't have a better name for it. Everything else, one way or the other flows through the area that you're talking about.
Yeah. So, so that's awesome that you all are starting to work on that because that's a huge issue.
And I, and Andrew, you know, he's a Hopewell resident and, and also a planner. So again, he, he started this conversation. So it's, it's an ongoing process and we're going to report back as we go along. Put together a slide presentation.
And I, yeah, I have two more short questions than everyone else. So it sounds like, and Ryan, you mentioned that with this need of rehabilitation, can you just say a little tiny bit more about the liquor license that someone would like?
I, I don't want to make, I don't want to get anyone too excited. You know, our, our jobs, I want to create as many tools and opportunities as possible. And I will say, again, one, similar to the grants that might be available and incentives that are only available in redevelopment or rehabilitation areas. This liquor license reform from last year seemed not to have much teeth in it. There was a big push to create more licenses and that didn't really happen. But ultimately, there is an ability to resurrect old licenses. And I have nothing specific to report there, but just say that we are working on that as well. And transfer unused license from other municipalities. And I'll, I'll say a kind of a silly meeting we had amongst the mayors was, well, can we like daisy chain them from Trenton to Ewing to Lawrence? Yeah. So those conversations are happening. And we're doing our best to be creative, make creative use of this new law. But in order for any of those things under the new law to work, the adjacent municipal licenses to come to an adjacent town, they can only land in a redevelopment or rehabilitation area. And by doing this, it could conceivably allow, you still have to follow all the other rules associated with liquor license, but ultimately, if someone were to purchase one, there's a chance they could bring it into Hopewell real quick.
So, because you all just passed it. So we officially won that? Like, are we officially an area?
Yeah, as of, as of earlier today. So, you know, the, I'm sure people were swarming on our borders with liquor license.
Does some of us like to, you know, spread the word about?
Find them and bring them to us.
I'll work on that. And Doug, did you really just say that you all found five hundred fourteen?
It was money that was attributed to old ordinances for the projects that were completed. So what we're doing by canceling the ordinance that gives us access to those funds.
Because that money was just sitting?
Yeah.
This is why we love Doug.
This is why, yeah. Because that's pretty amazing. So can you distribute the, so Mark, it's going for debt?
It can be used for debt repayment.
Some is for capital, I heard you say.
Four sixty-eight, we can use for debt repayment, for forty-two thousand for new capital projects. We just have to pass an ordinance.
Great.
And, and two thousand five hundred, two thousand eight hundred going to the capital fund surplus.
Fantastic. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I didn't mean to take so much time.
James Saban threatened, I want to thank the council for putting together the F A Qs on Fifty-seven Hamilton. It was a great first step in getting some of the questions answered. One thing I didn't see and I apologize, I perused it. Did we ever find out if Jeffrey Ellwood has a working website? Prince Wood Properties?
I mean, I, I've looked into this a little bit. I, from what I understand, the way redevelopers work is they create specific LLCs for each project, legally makes a lot of sense. And there, it makes sense for, it's like people shop for.
Work in both sides, that's all.
Yeah. So I, I just hope that there's a reason for them now.
There is. And out of the seven thousand projects that he had mentioned that he had been working on in the June meeting, have we seen any of the work that he's done and has that been shared to the community? Because one of the things for us to feel some confidence in this project is to actually see projects that have been completed. So out of those seven thousand, what have we seen? And that's on the website now? That's been public? Because the question was two-part. Has that been shared with the residents of?
Yeah, it was, it was.
Wasn't that a part of the appointing the redeveloper, that resolution? Didn't that have, was that information attached to that?
I think it was.
So there are links and, and there are, he gave us examples of projects that we can look at. There's one in Princeton. There's several around this area. That's the only one that I'm aware of. It's a small project. Yeah. And we could, and he said, we find that making that available. Yeah, I'd love to see that. But I mean, I, I checked him out for half a dozen of the places and I looked at it and go on Google and put the man on the screen. Drive. Be sure that we communicate. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else here in person? I've got online. I'm going to bring over Courtney. He will be hopefully able to join us as a panelist in a second. I'll put you up on the screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can't see you though. Could you turn your camera on?
Yep, let's see, start video. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys, for, for being council members and thank you, Samara, who's, who's going to leave us. I just had a couple of questions. One was, first of all, I, I still didn't get the name of the person who's coming in for the water. Just to help. I, I, I didn't hear it.
His name is Ralph Karachia. I think it's C A R. C H I A, that's his name.
Two Rs, okay. Ralph Karachia. Okay, thank you for that. And the other thing I was wondering about is just reading recently about some problems with contractors. You know, there's corruption, a lot of corruption, unfortunately. And not to assume that, but I mean, it, it does put the onus on, on us to kind of really do the due diligence about who's doing these projects and what they're doing. So for instance, the replacement of water lead pipes in Trenton, we've now discovered was not done properly. So there's, you know, there's a lot of fear in the community about that we want to know who we're working with. So I think it's helpful to know who these people are and to be able to look them up and find them, you know, not just look up on a, on a you know, I know they did this, that and the other, but it would really, I think, instill confidence if we were able to find a source where we could see what they've done in the past. So that was just another comment. And then the other question I had, just to add, is I wonder if, if the borough has been looking for people to write grants and things, or, you know, somebody who's skilled in, in looking for grants and finding grants. Because I know we don't have a huge budget for administration, but it might be helpful as we're looking at the water situation and all of that, to just find somebody who's really skilled in writing grants, looking for grants and all of that. And just as a part of the team, you know, to, to, to kind of enforce, you know, that this is something we're working on and that we care about. And I know we've got a lot of really smart people in the area. So maybe that could be something like a job call, you know, for a grant writer to help us look for grants to run our water system as opposed to simply selling. So those, those were the three points I had. And again, thank you. And I'm, I'm really grateful that we're able to attend meetings virtually. Thank you for making that possible. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Courtney. Just one quick note, you know, that, that particular I'll say contractor that we, we bring you through a, a service that we've used for many, including the service actually that comes as our administrator. So we, it's a fairly flexible and kind of elaborate vetting process, but a, a good point that you make. And it's actually kind of odd, we, we get a little bit more control over a contractor sometimes than, than some places do with their employees. And you, you, you mentioned the Trenton Water Works. I mean, those were unfortunately employees of, you know, public employees who were committing, I would probably assume crimes actually about with, with their system. So it's, it's challenging, but we, we have the things in place and it's a, we're lucky to have, I'll say, a trusted source and a consultant who's been able to bring us several, including our fantastic administrator, frankly, and, and a series of options to, to choose. So we, we kind of have a, let's say a middleman, but you know, a service to help us acquire the, the talent as well, rather than just as, you know, we'll use anything we can. And we're not, you know, we're not just guessing, you know, or playing there too. Well, I'll just add, so Mr. Karachia. Well, I'll, I'll just add, so Mr. Karachia is, I believe he is a licensed sewer and water operator. He wouldn't be, we wouldn't be operating under his license because Dave Mislik is our licensed operator for both water and sewer. But he actually has those credentials and works for several municipalities, um, and has a long track records, I remember looking, I haven't seen his resume in a while. Quite experienced, but that, I mean, having those licenses means that you're regulated and licensed by the state, um, uh, and so there's a certain, you know, control there, obviously, because they're all regulated and, um, subject to a board, uh, which is a good thing. The, oh, and just on the grant writing, um, so, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at sources and grants for the water system, um, it's, unfortunately, there are relatively few that are out there, there are lots of loans, but there are very few grants, and that's mostly because the grants that are out there that are, are either loans with a hundred percent principal forgiveness are usually applicable only to uh, municipalities that meet certain income criteria, which makes sense because of just the limited amount of money that's out there. Um, however, we did have an interesting discussion, uh, with some folks over in Rocky Hill about a company that they use as a grant writing company. And basically, the way it works is they have them on retainer and they pay a fair amount of money for it, I think it was somewhere around thirty thousand dollars a year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it was more than thirty, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, so, you know, it's something to investigate and, and basically, they're, they're not only limited to grants, for example, for water, but for all sorts of public projects, so you know, you can look at the economics of it and see whether it makes sense to incorporate it in your budget and see what, what the yield is likely to be, because, you know, I mean, a lot of our, um, capital projects of the roads are pretty well-known because those grants are coming from the state of D O T, um, municipal aid grant that you can apply for every year, but um, there are going to be other, and particularly when we're talking about stormwater in the future, for example, um, some of those other kinds of grants. Um, I think there's a lot to be said for having somebody who really specializes in understanding that whole universe and see what else is out there, um, so it's a good point.
And we also have Doug, who's very good at.
Yeah, actually, we have Doug.
That's one of the reasons we love Doug so much, is that he's really good at grant writing and, uh, he was able to get us a grant recently to, um, put in, you know, some walking paths in the park and, you know, you have Krista.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I, and I appreciate everything that's been done, I, I was just wondering if it might be something to be pursued a bit more. Um, and, uh, that's, yeah, so thank you for your answers, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, any, I don't see any other hands online or people in person. I would take a motion to close the public, uh, session.
Awesome.
All, uh, all in favor?
Now I'm in favor.
Uh, and I would then take a motion to, uh, adjourn our meeting for. All in favor? You're adjourned.